Thank you all for joining us tonight for our second Kentucky Nurses Association Town Hall. I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank our affiliate organizations that were part of the planning for this. The Governmental Affairs Cabinet is just fantastic in getting these kind of things planned. And I want to tell you a little bit about KNA. First, I just want to mention, I said this is our second Town Hall. We have a Town Hall each Thursday in the month of September. So again, this is for the second. This is for the Northern part of the state. Then, next Thursday is the Louisville area. The River City Chapter is hosting that. And then on September 22nd, it's the Penny Ral chapter hosting that. Marshall Woodall is going to be, I think, our host for that. But it's really being sponsored by the Green River Chapter, the Western Chapter, and the Penny Ral Chapter for KNA. And then on the last Thursday night of the month, September 29th, that is for the Southeastern and South Central kind of part of the state, and that is the Nightingale Chapter and Southeastern Chapters that will be hosting that. So again, thank you guys very much. We've been doing these Town Halls for a few years. And the virtual option has to be a really good option for us because we have, like tonight, I know it's kind of focused on the Northern part of the state, but we have people from all over the state who are joining us as participants tonight. So thank you guys again very much. You may or may not know this, but KNA was established in 1906 as the organization to establish the nursing profession, scope of practice, and standardized education for nurses in Kentucky. By statute, the KNA represents and speaks for the 89,000 voting Kentucky nurses who make up 53% of the healthcare workforce in Kentucky. KNA is actually, that's kind of, KNA is kind of the umbrella organization for all of our organizations. KNA, the Kentucky Nurses Foundation, which we refer to as KNF, that's our philanthropic arm, and then KNAC, which is the Kentucky Nurses Action Coalition. KNA focuses on the profession as a whole. KNF focuses on fundraising and education, research, and scholarship. KNAC focuses on workforce issues, including sustainability to meet the healthcare needs of our communities. KNA is responsible for promoting and protecting the professional image of nursing. While the history of the Kentucky nursing profession stands on the shoulders of the KNA, there are so many active activities that KNA supports on an ongoing basis. Legislation that supports nursing, nurses, and access to healthcare across the state. We appoint nurses to the Nursing Technical Advisory Committee, the TAC, which is a part of the MAC, the Medicaid Advisory Committee. KNA provides recommendations to the governor for appointments for the six seats on the Kentucky Board of Nursing. We convene and collaborate with a bold group of health-related organizational affiliates that address healthcare and nursing issues. We provide a great deal of continuing education for nurses that can be used for licensure requirements, as well as for professional development. KNA has input and impact on nursing school curriculum development. We have an active PAC, a political action committee. We participate in workforce analysis and development. And we are committed to social justice and the impact of JEDI, which is Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion, on healthcare outcomes as outlined in our mission, vision, and values. Just recently, KNA participated with health departments throughout Kentucky to deliver 140,000 COVID vaccinations, over 12,000 COVID tests, and over 100 community listening sessions and educational sessions about COVID. As well as responding to the tornado disaster in Western Kentucky, we just recently have been responding to the flooding disaster in Eastern Kentucky. A lot of really great work going on through our membership, through our chapters, and through the KNF, raising funds and supporting those nurses and communities in that part of the state. This list is not really exhaustive of who we are and what we are about. It is really, honestly, pretty brief when you know everything that we do. But on the last note, I would like to invite everyone who becomes a legislator to use KNA as a resource when you have health and healthcare questions while you're planning legislative activities. We are here for you. I would like to introduce the KNA CEO now, Delinor Manson, who will review the agenda and flow of the evening. Thanks very much for being here.
Welcome again, everyone. Thank you all for being here. I just want to say that for the individuals who are participants, who cannot be seen, but you can put your questions in the chat box, and we'll have some time at the end for you to be able to do that. I want to say also a thank you to the chapter hosts, and that is Northern, and Teresa Huber is that representative. And we really appreciate you being here to represent the Northern Chapter. Also, I would like to remind everyone that we are recording, and it will be on the KNA YouTube channel. And something else that we did today, which I thought was stellar, was to send the link to all of the participants, so that they'll be able to use it at will. I will be the timekeeper, and I usually have a red hook. But I found out that last week, the red hook was not nearly as effective as the mute button. So let me explain how that works. You will get a minute and a half to respond to questions. And if you get to a minute point six, the mute button will take care of that. And I will start with, when you have 20 seconds, I'll give you the finger. And if you don't see the finger, the mute button, it's going to happen. That's going to be the hook. The other thing is you'll get a minute and a half to tell us a little bit about yourselves. And while we really appreciate everyone who's on tonight, we're only going to allow candidates to speak and answer questions at this time. Then we will have a discussion about the KNA priorities that we had for 2022. We have not decided on the priorities for 2023. And Eva Stone, Dr. Eva Stone, will talk about our legislative priorities for 2022. And she'll also speak briefly about our process of how, when an organization or an individual would like the KNA to support or oppose an issue, how that happens. And so she will be addressing that as well. Then we'll have about 45 minutes for Q and A. And again, Q and A will only be for the candidates who are on. There will be no other people who will be encouraged or allowed to answer questions. Next, we'll have questions from the audience after we have our moderators to ask questions of the candidates. And then, of course, we'll talk a little bit about, at the very end, a little bit more about KNA. It's kind of like a little sandwich. It's a KNA sandwich. We're the bread. So with that said, I would like to go around and have everyone have an opportunity to introduce themselves. Remember, a minute and a half, I got this mute button right over here. Okay? I'm just saying. Okay. So Julie, I'm going to start with you because I love your smile, and you always make me laugh. So go ahead, do it.
Thanks, Delinor. I'm Julie Denton. I am newly working with the KNA as their lobbyist. And for those of you who I've worked with before, it's been great. For those of you who win, I look forward to working with you. I served 20 years in the state senate. In 16 of those years, I was chair of the Health and Welfare Committee. So worked with Delinor and the KNA on numerous occasions, and I'm excited to be working with them as their lobbyist.
We're excited too, Julie. You just have no idea. Debbie, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name's Debbie Lucas Angel, and I'm running for Representative Kentucky's 61st House District. That district covers all of Gallatin, all of Grant, five precincts in the southwestern portion of Boone, and then the Brock Precinct in Kenton. So it's a pretty good-sized area. It's a very rural area. My background, I'm a retired, I worked for the state of Kentucky and retired from Kentucky. I'm a resident farmer. And I just want, the reason I got into this is because frankly, our district wasn't being served. And healthcare and childcare are two very important things to me. Real quick, the plank's on my platform, so you know where I stand, is supporting public education, addressing the drug issues, which I feel like are not being addressed at all, and then providing proper public budgeting. And all of these tie in together with healthcare across the state. And I'm really excited. I thank you guys for the opportunity to come tonight and speak. But I'm really, I want to get in there and get some things done because I feel like a lot of times, in our district especially, wheels are turned, but nothing's being done. We don't move forward at all. As a matter of fact, basically, nothing's being done. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to come by and look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Okay, buddy.
Okay, you can start my clock, Delinor. All right. Hi, I'm State Representative Bernie Wheatley. I've been elected to two terms in the 65th District, which now includes Covington, Park Hills, Fort Wright, Edgewood, and Cresview Hills. I'm a solo-practicing attorney, retired as Covington Fire Department's Fire Chief, served 20 years as a Covington firefighter, and now devote most of my legal practice to first responders. In full disclosure, I'm married to a nurse. Some might be familiar with, Dr. Judy Gottse, KNA Board, University of Kentucky faculty, leading researcher for and founder of the Institute for the Brand Image of Nursing. Brevity in mind, a major theme of my part as being a legislator is to constantly be striving for a safe, healthy, and happy Kentucky. Full access to all areas of healthcare system is really important to a happy and healthy state. As a first responder, of course, firefighter, and EMT, I made many emergency calls, responded hundreds of times in medical situations. And for my record, I have supported the Affordable Care Act since its inception, and have sponsored several pieces of legislation that augments the ACA provisions or provides coverage to Kentucky, and should the federal law not exist anymore. I fully supported Governor Steve Beshear's efforts to join the state exchange option in the ACA and provide healthcare to more, which now provides healthcare to more than 600,000 additional Kentuckians. I did not support the Bevin Administration's efforts to implement a work program in order to receive Medicaid healthcare benefits, the 1115 waiver. I was a co-sponsor and avid supporter of House Bill 354 this last session, which gave nurse practitioner, certified nurse, midwives, and nurse innocentists freedom to practice to the full extent. So unfortunately, that bill--
I'm sorry, Representative Wheatley, your time is up. Representative Moser.
Good evening. Hi, how are you?
Doing well.
Good. Well, thanks for having me. I guess my clock has started, so--
Your clock has started.
Okay. I am State Representative Kim Moser. I represent the 64th District, and that is Taylor Mill. It's all in Kenton County. So Taylor Mill, Independence, Ryland Heights, I have a little bit of Erlanger, a little bit of Edgewood, and I have about half of Latonia now, and up to 15th Street in Covington. I was first elected in 2016, so I came in in 17, in the new majority. And we got very busy implementing some really important business-friendly infrastructure. Healthcare is my priority. My background is nursing. I was a neonatal intensive care and a flight nurse for about 18 years at various hospitals. I love being a nurse. It's a terrific experience. I also did architecture and hospital design, and just came from a great tour at University of Kentucky today, Cancer Center, and saw some really neat designs. So I also served as the Executive Director of Drug Control Policy in Northern Kentucky, and so addiction, mental health, and substance use disorders. Am I still on?
You have one second, and no, you're not. Thank you very much. Thank you. Shelley, you're on mute.
Hello, I'm Shelley Funky Pro Meyer, and thank you for allowing me to participate, even though I knew it would be for limited time. So I'm a first-time candidate, and I'm Senate District 24, which is now three voting precincts in Kenton County, along with all of Campbell County, Pendleton County, and Bracken County. I grew up on rural Route 1 in Demossville, which is certainly that rural aspect now of my Senate District. I live in Alexandria, and my office is in Covington. So I live, work, and represent all kind of three areas of my district. And full disclosure, my mom is a 50-year nurse. My sister Rita's a 35-year emergency room nurse. My bonus son, Jordan, is a respiratory therapist. I have a daughter-in-law who is a nurse, and a sister who's a medical nurse as well. So I've got a real passion for health, but I'm a holistic financial advisor. So my health represents true wealth is health. And I do believe that part of my commitment is to have a wellness revolution for Kentucky, but I like to see it both a financial wellness and a actual health wellness-focused. And I do believe that if you don't have your health, so what if you have the dollars and the cash flow? You need your health. So I'm incredibly grateful, and I will acknowledge, I'm a prangford outsider, so I do not know what all the issues are and all the legislative priorities. So I'm grateful that you'll be sharing that tonight. So thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Okay. Dr. Stone.
Well, that was perfect timing then, because that's what I will talk about then, legislative priorities. And Delinor is completely--
Well, I just want you to introduce yourself, not yet on the legislative. I still have a couple more people that need to introduce themselves. No, don't get started yet.
Well, that was a good segue, though. I am Eva Stone. I am a nurse practitioner. I work in Jefferson County, and I am a member of the Governmental Affairs Committee for the Kentucky Nurses Association, and a passionate advocate for children's health.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. Kelly Jones.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kelly Jones. I'm coming to you live from an eight-year-old soccer practice, as I sit in the car. I'm running for District 68, which is in Campbell County. So I cover Fort Thomas, Cold Springs, Silver Grove, Melbourne, all the way down to the county line in Alexandria. So not the entire county, but partial. I'm a mental health therapist. I used to work in community mental health care. I usually work with families and children. And then I also work with caregivers as well, who have children with disabilities. I'm a mother of three, a 12-year-old, a 10-year-old, and an eight-year-old. And my 10-year-old has Down's Syndrome. His name's Linus. And Linus is a big reason that I'm running. I'm running against the gentleman that's bringing in charter schools to the area. He's the lead consultant. And as we know, charters don't take kids with disabilities. So I've got personal skin in this game, and-- So that is definitely one of my priorities, is education and making sure that it's accessible for everyone. Mental health, making sure that we expand access. You know, working in community mental health during the pandemic was definitely challenging. And it was challenging for myself and for healthcare providers, school personnel. So I want to make sure that we're taking care of all of those folks.
Thank you. Renee Heinrich?
Hi, I'm Reenie Heinrich.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
That happens to me all the time.
I had parents that just thought they'd be creative, and that happens. I'm also running for Senate District 24, and also come from a healthcare family. So my Kentucky roots go back, all the way back to Daniel Boone. I am a descendant of Christopher Guest, who worked with Daniel Boone to found the state. And three members of my family, both my grandfather, my dad, and my uncle, all played UK basketball. So Kentucky is my home. It's what I love. I'm Kentucky-educated. I went to Eastern Kentucky University, and then Chase Law School. And I've been practicing law in my own practice now since 2000. I've been on Highland Heights City Council for over 10 years. And I also, as part of my law practice, deal with abused and neglected children. So seeing your all's priorities regarding the Sane exams and those sorts of things are very important to me. I also am married and have six children, three biological of mine. And I raised teenagers before I raised little ones, which was a little bit of a challenge because most of them are girls. And my eldest daughter, now biological daughter, is at U of L, which is something that my father wasn't very excited about. I'm running because I'm really tired of buzzwords taking over real solutions. And I think our politicians, a lot of times right now, are looking for the buzzwords and to try and get into the lexicon of seeming kind of sexy and important, and really not doing the work that needs to be done to find decent solutions. I believe in strong public schools, healthcare, and increasing mental health care, expanding infrastructure and broadband. And I hope to serve District 24, which is Boone, Bracken, Campbell, and parts of Kenton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Tammy Burns. Tammy? Okay. Susie, I'm going to let you introduce your candidate, but you will not be able to answer any questions as a stand-in.
I totally understand. And thank you for giving me the chance to introduce myself, but more importantly, Megan. So I'm Susie Wallingford. I am Megan Brandon's Campaign Events Coordinator. And Megan is running for State Representative in District 70, which includes Bracken County, Mason County, Robertson County, and Harrison County. We are a new district, newly districted that way. Megan has been a nurse since 2011. She graduated at the top of her class at Morehead with honors. This was around the same time as her oldest son, Ben, was being evaluated for autism. Ben is now 14. She got that diagnosis, you know, just before graduating. And as she was working as a nurse prior to starting her nonprofit, Sprinkles of Hope, she worked in several different areas of care, but her favorite was long-term health and working specifically with the elderly population. She's worked in three of the four nursing homes in our district. And this taught her, you know, to fight for patients' rights, as well as to, you know, stand up for her rights as a nurse. She's described to me, obviously, you know, some pretty unnerving nurse-to-patient ratios. And so she really believes in expanding nurses' rights, as well as public education and healthcare for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those introductions, everyone. So now we're going to get to the exciting part. We're going to start with Dr. Eva Stone, and she is going to describe our process for if a organization or a person wants us to support or oppose an issue, how you get the KNA to support. And then she's going to talk a little bit about our priorities for 2022, our legislative priorities for 2022. Dr. Stone?
Perfect. Thanks, Delinor. So I'll talk a little bit first about the legislative priorities. Of course, members of the Kentucky Nurses Association can be found in every legislative district throughout the state. And every year, the KNA, or Kentucky Nurses Association, works to establish legislative priorities. And Delinor has talked about that a little bit. But they're very important because we represent our stakeholders, we represent nurses, and we represent the communities we serve. So our leaders are comprised, our membership, excuse me, is comprised of leaders in emergency, oncology, critical care nursing, nursing education, businesses, administration, nurse, school nursing, nurses. You can find an all aspects of the, of communities around Kentucky. So last year, our legislative priorities, and in previous years, have been, number one, to support placing a nurse in every school all day, every day. Just as nurses believe in evidence-based practice, we also believe in research-based policy implementation. We believe the research that suggests placing a nurse in every school will help decrease misutilization of emergency departments, improve pediatric chronic disease management, which of course, Kentucky has led the nation in negative health outcomes, both in physical and mental health, for many, many years. And so a different approach is absolutely necessary. We want to support, we believe having nurses in schools will support school attendance and decrease chronic absenteeism. And of course, school nursing can be directly related to improved test scores and better academic outcomes for students, which is evidence-based and research-based. Although any of these factors on their own would be an excellent reason for KNA and legislators to support school nurses, we also believe in the research that suggests for every dollar that's spent on having a school nurse yields an overall cost savings of $2.20. So to put that in perspective, it's as though we would be buying something amazing for a dollar, handing the cashier a $1 bill, and then getting that amazing item and receiving $1.20 and change. And so, very, very important consideration for KNA. We've also supported increasing patient access to care through a restructuring of the CAPA CS, which is the Controlled Substances Prescribing for Nurse Practitioners, for this who qualify. So to put this into perspective of why it's so important to nurses in the communities that we serve, if we were to show you a map of the state of Kentucky and color the areas of the state black that were designated as a mental health provider shortage area, the entire map would be black. Many of you have already mentioned the lack of access to mental health services in the states. If I were to show you a map of Kentucky with all the districts blacked out in which there's a primary care provider shortage, around 84% of the state would be black. So restructuring of the CAPA CS requirement is not a title or licensure issue. This is an access issue. It's a patient outcome issue. Data supports the safe utilization of nurse practitioners to fill these gaps in our healthcare systems. And nurse practitioner outcome data is not only at least equivalent in the primary care setting. Research also suggests it's less costly. Kentuckians need access to improve health outcomes. And speaking as a nurse practitioner who works in a school district, I can tell you that access is a very significant issue that children, not only in Jefferson County, but around the whole state, are facing daily. We've established that access to appropriate care is a priority for nurses throughout Kentucky. It's also been discussed that we believe in research-based policy solutions in order to increase that access. Sexual assault nurses, which have been mentioned, these examiners provide essential care to victims during the most vulnerable times of their life. Research shows that when a victim has access to a sexual assault nurse examiner, there was not only improved patient outcomes, but significantly improved prosecution rates for the perpetrators. Improved mental health outcomes translate into long-term cost savings. Increase access to sane nurses through incentive programs to ensure hospitals are able to provide these trained nursing, these training programs can assist in providing Kentuckians with the access that they so desperately need. In 2022, KNA supported COVID mitigation efforts, which has been mentioned, at a time of uncertainty devastation and the loss of so many. Kentucky nurses provided support for so many people. We supported vaccination efforts, masking, and workforce support. Although controversial to some, KNA is always guided by data and what is ethically just for all people. KNA did not just support these measures. In theory, we provided them with boots-on-the-ground support to thousands of Kentuckians during the most trying time in US and Kentucky history, by testing and vaccinating thousands of Kentuckians, and by supporting our affiliate organizations who provided search support in the most underserved parts of Kentucky. This is why nurses are the most trusted health professionals in the world. Through the most difficult times in Kentucky's history, nurses have risen to the occasion and have served our communities, in our hospitals, in our homes. But we're at a point of critical crisis. Although in Kentucky, we've got 89,000 voting nurses, we have an estimated shortfall of 36%. Can you imagine walking into a hospital and only 2/3 of it being available and staffed? Consider the implications of this for Kentucky. Think of this, how this impacts patient care and outcomes and healthcare costs. So we have supported initiatives such as faculty retention and recruitment incentives, expanded loan forgiveness, opportunities for expanded loan forgiveness, a nurse emeritus program, retention programs, and creative solutions in order to attract and retain nurses to the profession. Kentucky deserves good nurses. And finally, as previously discussed, these were the 2022 legislative priorities. Each year, the-- Each year, the KNA Governmental Affairs Cabinet receives requests for support and opposition for various topics on legislative issues. As these are obtained, there are researched and great consideration is made on the impact to KNA's priority stakeholders. The Board of Directors then determines KNA's position on the topic based on the evidence that's been provided. KNA values the input of every nurse, patient, and legislator throughout Kentucky. So if you wish to have a bill or a topic considered by KNA, you can simply navigate to the KNA website, click on advocacy, and click on the request to support an issue or legislation.
Thank you, Dr. Stone. I really appreciate that. I think that gives us a very good overview of our 2022 legislative priorities. And at this time, we'd like to start with our co-moderators, and they're going to be asking some questions of you all. And remember, you'll have a whole one minute and 50 seconds, one and a half, uh, one minute and 30 seconds. So it's a minute and a half. And I have the buzzer right here. So thank you all, and I do appreciate you all participating. Julie, would you like to get us started?
Once I get off mute. So here's the question. Now, shoot, if I could pull the questions up. That would be helpful. As we look towards the 2023 legislative session, how do you plan to support nurses and their issues that are of a priority for them? And let's start with Debbie.
There we go. Now I'm unmuted. Um, well, one of the ways I would do it, you mentioned about the school nurses, and this is something that a lot of my friends actually are school nurses and like the mental health issues. I would try to get this funded. They, they're supposed to have, for every 250 students, they're supposed to have a mental health professional. That was passed, but it was unfunded. And these unfunded mandates are, all they are is vote-getters. And I would seek to get that funded as well as the issues that you guys, you know, see as I would listen to you. And then that's the best thing that I can do as a representative and as a legislator is listen to you folks because you know what you need. Teach me, and then I can take it to the legislature and then be your, be your voice.
All right. Thank you very much, Debbie. We appreciate that. Shelley, I'm going to go to you because I know you're under a time crunch and I want to make sure we get as many questions by you as we can.
Thank you. And I do love your priority of having a school nurse. I shared that my mom is a 50-year nurse, so I can acknowledge that I was blessed to have one when I arrived home from school and before I left for school. But so many children don't have that to be able to check in on the bellyache or the toothache or whatever they might be experiencing throughout the, the day. So I think that's a tremendous priority, and I could see really advocating and getting behind that. As I mentioned, that I believe we need a wellness revolution. Part of that comes back to, I'm the sixth of 12 children, but I'm the mom of six children and five grandchildren. So family is such a priority to me and that foundation of having the healthy process and the healthy system that we, we can all function within. I truly believe that it begins with the warmth and the bedside manner that the nurses immediately are the first line of preparation before that person would see a doctor. So I also value the nurse practitioner and that advanced training and the commitment towards ongoing training. So I'm eager to be supportive. As a financial advisor, I'm very data-driven, so I'm also eager to see some of the successes and the backing and the support that you shared to validate some of the additional initiatives that you're looking for. Because it sounds like they're being done all over the country. Perhaps, how can we bring them to Kentucky? And there's proof out there. So bringing that forward, I could see myself learning more and standing with you on some of your initiatives.
Great. We appreciate that. Representative Wheatley?
Well, the first thing I would do is invite Julie Denton to my office and say, let's go. Thank you for this. Things I'll, I'll do and I'll support again is the, I was a strong supporter of the CAPA CS, adjusting that so a nurse, the nurses can be more fully practicing to their license in the state of Kentucky. I do support also a nurse in every school, but you know, I'm a fiscally responsible legislator, I feel like. So we have to find a way to properly fund that. Very important to me. You know, the, the faculty retention and recruitment, that is a nursing shortage issue. How do we get more nurses out of our nursing schools? Here's what I think about that. We ask nurses, what's the best way to deal with our nursing shortage? It seems like some of the more recent work, especially right during the hot parts of the pandemic, we were asking other medical professionals, but I think the nurses and the KNA should have a strong voice in how we deal with the nursing shortage. So I'll be supportive of all, of all those measures. And again, healthcare access, mental health care, you know, the telehealth bill, which one of our representative, Representative Mosers was a big part of, expanding all availability for mental health and telehealth will be something important to me also.
Wonderful. Glad to hear that. And since you mentioned her name, we'll go to Representative Moser next. You're on mute. You're on mute, Representative Moser.
Oh, sorry. I thought I clicked it. All right. Um, let's see. Well, since I chair Health and Family Services, I do have an opportunity and a real privilege, actually, to work with all of you on an ongoing basis. And we've, we've had a lot of successes. I am all about supporting our healthcare workforce. In fact, I sponsored House Bill 573 last year, which is the loan forgiveness program for healthcare workers and really addressing those underserved areas. I also was instrumental in passing the Medicaid expansion for postpartum women for 12 months, a very important measure when we are considering the maternal mortality rates that we have here in Kentucky. You know, as far as access to, to better care, certainly, I was also the sponsor of House Bill 525. And this allowed community health workers to become a Medicaid reimbursable service, increasing access and identifying those barriers that patients have in getting their healthcare, addressing chronic health conditions, better management, and really just addressing those barriers. They can be transportation, it can be cost, it can be a lot of things. And so that's an important piece of this. The Community Health Worker Bill also increased the pipeline into healthcare worker or healthcare professions. And certainly, I would hope that some of our community health worker.
I'm sorry, Representative Moser, your time is up.
She has so much. It's a little time.
I know.
I know.
We'll give her a little bit of time later.
Yes. Ms. Jones, you're next.
I'm going to talk really fast to try to cover everything. I think that the number one thing we have to address post-COVID is burnout. We have seen extensive burnout in the nursing industry and then also in mental health. So we have got to do something to retain them. How can we address that? Retirement plans. I know some places offer wraparound services, but you know, retirement accumulation plans, those types of things. We've got to offer better retirement, more incentives, as well as, we did see some increased pay with COVID. I would like to see some of that stick around to incentivize people to come into the profession. I also think that, you know, we've, many of us, mental health professionals provided volunteer services to offer mental health care to medical personnel during the pandemic. I think it's usually like eight sessions maximum for them regularly. So I would like to see that increased to ongoing care that, that would also help to retain. And I think we need to do some more work as we look at how do we treat women, Black women, the LGBTQ plus community, the disability community. We realize that we don't provide treatment in the same way, and sometimes we measure pain a little differently. So I would like to see expanded coverage and education around that to help nurses provide better services. I also would love to work on pieces where, where we can bring together mental health and medical care and marry that. They're doing some really good work in Owensboro, bringing together community.
I'm sorry, Kelly, but your time is up.
Thanks. We appreciate you sharing. And Ms. Heinrich?
Well, to begin, I just am going to say that I believe in medicine and science. I think, again, a lot of the buzzwords that we have seen on different news shows and those sorts of things have really gotten away from looking at the research and what the research tells us and listening to those in the medical profession. And I think that's important to make sure that, that those people in the know with the training are the ones that are helping craft policy. I would have an open-door policy for any constituent and also any medical professional that might have an issue that, that they would want to see. I also believe that we need to expand our mental health practice. I know just from my law practice and dealing with abused and neglected kids that we have a whole lot of problems with people that need mental health services that they are not getting. Community partners right now are backed up, they have waiting lists. And I think what I'm hearing from my friends that are in the ER, they're telling me that as a result, the ERs are overrun. So not only do we have a nursing shortage, we have more people going into the ER, a lot of times with mental health crises that could very well be preventable. So I believe that, you know, ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure and that we need to really look at trying to help those of, of our community that are struggling with mental health issues, especially after COVID. And that is kind of what I would do to support nurses.
Wonderful. We appreciate that. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stone to ask the next question.
Thanks, Julie. So the next question for everybody. Is the nursing shortage crisis a priority for you? And how do you plan to address the shortage related to retention and to recruiting? And Shelley, we'll start with you.
Thank you. I do believe that there are some incentive-oriented approaches, but Buddy said it very well. I believe the nurses can provide us some tremendous insight as to how to address their attraction to the industry. Because candidly, I could never do the job of a nurse. It has got a level of care and attention to areas that give me the heebie-jeebies. But at the end of the day, I'm a mom of six kids, so you might imagine that I'm a master nurse in my own household. But I do believe, when I sit down and I talk with my family, and we, we have a number of friends that are in the industry, there are some very clever ideas. And I certainly, Representative Moser was sharing some of the other introductions that she's made with tuition reimbursement or, but also starting earlier, getting younger people involved sooner so that they can participate in high school and some of the programs offered through our Kentucky colleges and so forth. Yes, and I'm wrapping up, but I think there are so many excellent incentive-oriented solutions.
Thank you. Kelly, how about you?
So I think I kind of dipped into this before. We have to look at retirement and how we're attracting money talks. I used to work at Cincinnati Children's in the rheumatology department, and I was on the research side. But I will say, and as I've spoken with nurses and other medical professionals, usually some of our health insurance in that industry is some of the worst. So lots of us depend on our spouse's health insurance because it makes a lot more financial sense for us to be on those insurance plans. So we have to be offering better health insurance to our own medical community. So some of those incentives, loan forgiveness, of course, and then also some of the prescribed, as we're talking about nurse practitioners, you know, and prescribing abilities and this shortage. And that's something that we're talking about in mental health too, possibly, is looking at prescribing for mental health therapists and those privileges for us as we try to address these shortages that we don't see stopping anytime soon and growing exponentially. So how do we expand ways that we can provide care that's helpful and will actually meet the needs of our populations that we serve so that it's not just this bottleneck system where we feel a little helpless? I think that some of those things, as we give them greater opportunities to serve the communities in greater ways and resolve some of that bottleneck, I think that will elevate nurses and their pride in their profession and, and feeling accomplished in what they can do. A continued flexibility that we saw during COVID for families, working hours and shifts that we can adjust for nurses to take care of families and work. All of those things would be great incentives, I think, to retain and increase.
Sorry, Kelly, your time is up.
Thank you. Representative Moser?
Yes, thank you. Well, as I mentioned before, I do chair Health and Family Services, and we dedicated an entire hearing just, was that two weeks ago, a week and a half ago at the state fair, to the nursing shortage? And so we were really able to hear a lot from our community partners on some of the strategies that they're working on with employers. So I, I think that that was a very good kind of overview of what we're, what we're hearing. We do work with, like I said, our community partners, we work with our universities. And so, you know, really honing in on, on what we can do to increase the pipeline is a big part of what we should do. I mentioned the loan forgiveness program. We do need to address burnout. It has been really highlighted, of course, during COVID, but nurses have been asked for years to do more and more with less, as, as have all healthcare professionals. My husband's a pulmonologist and critical care doc, and so he, you know, of course, I, I hear about all of the barriers to just providing good patient care. And a lot of times, those are government regulations. So we have to be careful about what we impose on our healthcare workers. Violence in the workplace is an issue that not only nurses deal with, all healthcare workers are dealing with, but I am very interested in that. But really focusing on team-based healthcare because at the end of the day, we're all patients, and without our healthcare, we really have nothing.
Thank you. Debbie?
Sorry, sometimes my mouse gets carried away and it won't move. But, but this definitely retention in nursing, yes, that definitely is an issue. Like I said, I have some friends, and I had one friend the other day that I know that she cares, but she, she had a comment about how that it's just a job. I go there, I do my thing, and I come home and forget. And it's like, no, you don't. I know you don't do that. And she's like, no, I don't. But the, the pressure is so much. And tuition reimbursements is definitely something that should be done. I think we need to go to the, like when somebody, you know, nurses and educators and stuff, when they go through, you know, through their, their schooling, and then, you know, the contracts to stay for like three to five years or something, and at the end of that, forget the loan. That's something people used to do, and I think it's something we should do, and that way we can help retain quality people here, you know? And that's another thing we need to keep folks here. We've turned people with 401Ks, we've actually turned people into brokers. I remember that when they started with it. I am not, I am not an accountant. I do not like fooling with that stuff. I like, frankly, deferred compensation is something I know it's hard to do, but it's something that I think helps, especially in these type, type of positions. And then, and then also, the other thing, like NKU Grant County has a BS nursing program, and increasing those statewide would be really good.
Thank you. Rennie?
I, I find it somewhat curious that we are finding ourselves now in 2022.
I I find it somewhat curious that we are finding ourselves now in 2022 in a nursing shortage. When I remember graduating from high school in 1991 and everybody talking at that time that nursing was the career everybody needed to go into because we were going to have a shortage when the boomers started to retire. It's just an example of our government not really being proactive and instead being responsive to to things that we kind of see on the horizon, but we don't take care of because it's not right in our face. I think expanding, I think we have problems with nurses, teachers, police, all of those people that care for other people and are not paid commiserate to what they're doing for the rest of society. I think it's important to to take care of. I agree that we need to expand benefit programs. I think we need to expand expand practice areas for nurse practitioners so that we can have more treatment in the portions of the state in Eastern Kentucky that sometimes don't have as many doctors and practitioners that are down there to to give good healthcare. I also support pre-K childcare programs. I think the state really needs to look at doing that. I represent a lot of single moms who are nurses. And if they're working 312s and they don't have a shared custody schedule, they have a real hard time trying to figure out how they're going to get their children to school if they're supposed to be in to the hospital at 6 o'clock in the morning. I think it's looking at the whole problem and really trying to come up with solutions that work for all of our people on the front line that are taking care of us and especially our nurses. And I think some of the ideas that people have set are really good. We just need to make sure that we can fund them and that that's something that's not going to put us in in the lurch down the road.
Thank you. Representative Wheatley?
Thank you. Yeah, I could just did almost everything everybody has said. I'm going to touch on a couple other short. One being that, you know, I I think nurse, I think of nursing as autonomous healthcare providers, lifting them up so they do get to practice at the full extent of their license. And when we identify who truly are the registered nurses as opposed to support staff, so that we know that we have to hire in the support staff. And this goes all the way throughout the healthcare system. So when they the higher, the lower hired in support staff is there, the registered nurses can practice their full medical license, as then can medical doctors practice to their full level, as Representative Moser referred to, is we're shorting on staffing staffing throughout. Whether or not we can get that through some kind of governmental action, I think we can do it through our schools, our through our our universities and getting the faculties and the staffing taken care of through getting more nurses through nursing school. There's a couple other items that I think that as a myself, as a firefighter, we had standards for minimum staffing. I'd like to see the nursing practice do that. In Kentucky, we can set standards for minimum standard standards for nurses per patient load and all that. I think that's very important. It may not be a law, but it is a standard that has tried to be met. There is ways to do that and to be successful in that. And then hospitals can.
Sorry, Representative Wheatley, I had to, your time is up.
I think that's everybody. So Julie, I think it's back to you.
You're on mute, Julie.
Thanks. Good golly. So the question is, what would you like to see as a priority for Kentucky nurses? And let's start with Representative Moser.
Okay, thank you. Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
You are. Got it figured out. You know, we haven't really heard a lot about from from the Kentucky nurses that I've talked to about the issue of nurses being criminally charged for medical mistakes. And I have the I have a very big concern about this. I think that it's opening a pretty big can of worms. We already have provisions that allow for any any sort of punitive actions to be taken with our boards. And so, you know, I think that that is a potential potentially a a big issue and and something that we should be looking at. You know, certainly I've passed a lot of mental health legislation, mental health parity, mental health first aid, increasing psychologists and in by looking at some of the barriers in curriculum and even even some of our regulations didn't make a lot of sense in allowing, for example, psychologists to practice as an associate counselor while they're in a PhD program. So, you know, perhaps there are things in regulations that we can look at when we're we're talking about nurses. We, you know, a lot has been said. We have incidentally funded counselors in schools. We do have a state plan amendment and site and school based healthcare centers. And so that's an ongoing project. So I mean, there are a lot of good things happening. It, you know.
Representative Moser, your time is up.
All right. She's ruthless. And Shelley, I know you need to leave as well, and so we'll go to you next.
Thank you, Julie. And where I talk about more proactive approach to wellness and having a wellness revolution, I do believe the nurses maybe have many that. And I'd like to see us be able to give the nurses more tools to be educators, to be ongoing proactive health providers, much more proactive on nutrition, more proactive. I don't know that we give the nurses enough authority in those areas that are really proactive preventative health metrics. And when there have been the the authority given for nurses to be available for every 250 children, there couldn't be a better place to begin that foundational proactive health approach. You don't necessarily have a headache because you need a Tylenol. You have a headache because you haven't been drinking enough water. And there's just, you know, that's a common answer when we brought it to my mom. But I know that that's a common problem in schools. So I'd just love to give more tools to our nurses to be part of our proactive preventative health and our wellness revolution.
Thanks, Shelley. And I know you probably have to hop off here pretty soon. So we appreciate you participating as long as you have.
Julie, I I am heading to a client, and if you don't mind, I'm going to stay on and listen while I'm driving the four miles to my client's home.
Sure, sure. Not a problem. Stay on as long as you want. And if you can participate in other questions from the audience, just let us know.
Awesome. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome. Let's see. How about Debbie?
You're on mute, Debbie.
How's this?
Yeah, it's great. Thank you.
Good. I figured out I can use my spacebar. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But I think that one of the things I look at is the education, have more varied education and more locations for education. Okay, because like like I was saying a while ago, NKU Grant County has a BS in nursing studies here now. It's a four year degree, and there's only about 15 slots. But it's people that live here in Grant County that instead of having to go to Northern or to Gateway or anything like that, they can go right here in Grant County. And I think that would help a lot because, you know, gas and travel and the time and everything. I think it would probably open more doors if we had more localized training and stuff that was available. And of course, you know, the better pay and and to make sure that they have good adequate retirement. I can't stress the retirement some as much as it should be because so many people, when they start out, they don't think about retirement. But there is that backend, and we need to make sure that people have a backend to go to. And I think it will be better for them, you know, as they go through their career. And then the other thing to me, and I'm hearing this a lot from all over, is respect, communication and listening. Just listen to people. And then when they tell you this is a problem, something needs to be done, then do what you can. Talk to you guys, talk to them and address it. And, you know, that's that's what I see as priority is, you know, more varied and more, you know, available education for them. And then the respect, the listening, and then to give them a backend.
Thank you. And Rainey, you're next.
I think we can support nurses through several different processes. Everybody's got some really great ideas. I think right now underserved in our community is kind of using our trade in technical schools and trying to maybe expand into some healthcare regions, maybe not a BA program for sure. But I think there are opportunities to expand supports for nursing, you know, CNAs and those types of people that certainly can help with some of the workplace drama and some of the workplace issues that are going on in hospitals and in healthcare facilities. I think it's really important. I heard Representative Moser talking about workplace violence and some of the stories that I'm hearing that my nurse friends have to deal with when they are going on to their shift. It really seems like we as a society have changed significantly in a way. I was raised that you always took a shower and you were very well behaved and you didn't say a peep if you went to a doctor or a nurse. And I think society is getting away from that. I don't know that we legislate how to do that, but I certainly think making sure that the workplaces are safe and that there are protocols in place so that our healthcare professionals that are dealing with workplace violence know that they are covered, that they're backed, and and that they do not have to put up with a whole lot of shenanigans is really important. So those are a couple of the things I think we need to work on and try and do better by talking to the nurses and the hospitals and all of those people that are involved in those decision making capacities.
Thank you. And Kelly?
So I would really like to recognize what nurses actually do. One of my platforms is recognizing the infrastructure and invisible labor that women provide that our our country relies on. And I think we really saw that during the pandemic with so many women leaving their careers. And then, you know, lots of us were working full time, doing school full time at home. If you were a nurse, you were probably sleeping in your car. If you worked with COVID patients, to make sure you didn't take that home to your children. Nurses are the ones that sit with people like me. When I had my son and I didn't know he had Down syndrome, and I cried a lot at first because I was afraid and didn't know what that meant. Nurses were the ones that sat with me. Nurses are the ones, I had a nurse that just returned from maternity leave that diagnosed my third son with a double pneumothorax and saved his life. So nurses are not just, they're not just providing some of this care that I think people simplify. They're social workers, they're counselors. They wear a lot of hats. And I think that the pay needs to be compensatory for that because, you know, just like mental health providers, I carry home if I make a wrong decision and a child is going to get hurt because I did or didn't call CPS. I know my license is on the line every day, and we can't expect people to stick around long term in these careers, you know, for for low pay, for poor retirement, for poor healthcare insurance. We can't expect people to stick around in these high stress environments if we're not willing to recognize the actual work that they do. So I really want to elevate the platform of nurses and the career and the services that they really provide. I know that many of them, you know, take care of everyone else while they eat out of the vending machine every night and drink Mountain Dew and eat a candy bar, and that's their dinner, while they made a full dinner before they left for their shift and took care of every patient. So we need to make sure that they have an ability to take care of themselves.
We appreciate that. Thank you. And Representative Wheatley?
Thank you. Yes, and thanks, Kelly, for leading into this. Exactly what I'm getting ready to say. Nursing has been a female dominated profession for for many years. And I think that we have allowed as a society, the female profession to not have the voice that they really need to have. And I'm going to put the onus a little bit on the KNA and the major nursing organizations to lift the voices of nursing. And of course, just the kind of thing that my wife has been working on with the brand image of nursing, to recognize all nurses as leaders and experts in their field because they are. And they're autonomous healthcare providers. We need hospitals to recognize this. Schools, of course, to teach this throughout their as soon as the first day they walk into school. And this is just a very important part of lifting all voices of all nurses and letting them know that, you know, we and we should as a society recognize their expertise and letting them know that how much that we appreciate their efforts and to not put up and as hospitals shouldn't put up with the negative, dangerous things that have happened in the hospitals related to people who are basically were denying the science and they were having trouble even dealing with the nurses on staff. So again, this is about lifting all the voices, and I wish the KNA and all the nursing organizations the greatest amount of luck doing that.
Wonderful. I think that's it. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Stone.
Okay, our next question comes from a panelist and I mean attendee. And I want to say that it centers around equity. And so that's something that's important to our conversation. Several of you all have mentioned the ability to fund mental health and physical health services in schools in particular. And Kentucky does have a mechanism for that through expanded Medicaid billing that's been made available. So I would encourage you all to be aware of that opportunity, and 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 that is something that can help fund this work. This nurse asks, school nurses are at the front lines of caring for young lives. There have been some who have bolstered their political capital by addressing issues that not everybody believes are actual issues. The supposed push by trans feminine youth athletes to females at birth, youth athletes, especially considering the high rate of mental health crisis, suicidality and risk for homelessness and assault that are well documented for youth. What is your stance on legislation passed this last session as well as those bills planned for the 2023 session that pathologize, sorry, I wasn't sure I could say that right, transgender children and youth in schools and the criminalization of educators, nurses, mental health professionals who are providing gender affirming care? Let's start with Debbie Angel, please.
Always love it when I'm first.
I didn't want you, I felt like you kept being at the last of the list, so sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Hey, A usually runs first anyway, so I get used to it. But it's a really hard question, but to me, I'm really tired of this, frankly, of having values legislated. You know, and and the the issue of transgender. All I can say is I remember back when I was in college and I had a friend. I didn't know he was gay. I didn't care he was gay. After we graduated, I sent him a Christmas card, and it came back with some of the most ugly homophobic things written on it. And it was like they had apparently kicked him out and all this kind of stuff. And and I think about that every time when I hear about transgender youth and all of this because frankly, it's hate. That's what it comes down to, to me, what I hear is that it's it's pure D, meanest and hate. You know, it's unaccepting people and it's just, you know, trying to pigeonhole everybody into one thing. I don't believe that. I think that that there ought to be a level playing field. But I don't think that the legislature should be sitting there going, well, this is a boy and this is a girl and this is how we're going to do this. I think we need to step back and we need to talk to the professionals and let professionals make decisions and let the parents talk to the professionals. I don't think that we need to be sitting there as legislators go, you know, making those decisions. And I don't I don't know if that's making sense or not, but I just think that some of the things we've passed, like kicking transgender, you know, like a transgender female out of a out of a swimming class. Who are we to make that decision? You know, I mean, it is decisions that are being made based on on feelings and on beliefs instead of on science and on, you know, reality, frankly. So anyway, that's, I I just think that we don't need to be making those decisions legislatively. I think it's something we've got site based counseling and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Representative Wheatley?
Thank you. There are a couple premises in the question that I'm not sure are exactly right. I don't think we're criminalizing too many things that were that were mentioned. But let me say that I I'm very concerned about transgender youth and how the the mental health issues that they will be facing. If they are, you know, banned from doing this or banned from doing that. You know, I think you should love who you want to love and be who you want to be. And, you know, when we. And, you know, when we have professional organizations like the Kentucky High School Athletic Association and the NCAA, they have dealt with the sports issues related to gender very well. The thing that passed in Kentucky I did not support related to down to the sixth, sixth graders being banned from participating in sports. I gave a little story related to being a, a girl soccer coach and saying, you know, I know my players would have had no problems with a transgender person playing. Doesn't matter where they were at, there were, you know, what, what gender that they were choosing. So I, I fully support, I don't support any kind of bans on the, on transgender youth. And I really concerned about their, their mental health in all of society.
Thank you. Rainie?
I wanted to thank her for that question because I think it's a good one. I think there's a lot of issues that are raised for political capital that again are kind of buzzwords without a whole lot of solutions and, you know, kind of empty, empty issues. Buddy kind of beat me to it. The sports bodies can take care of these issues on their own through testing of blood to figure out hormones and all kinds of things like that. It's not something that needed to be legislated. It's not something that I think really was even a problem. I mean, we saw the, the news all over the place about the swimmer that was going on, but that wasn't a Kentucky swimmer. So I think it's much ado about nothing. And I really think there are a lot of other bigger, more important issues that we can take care of. And I just don't believe that, that we need to legislate that. The age of puberty and beyond is a really tough time in a lot of people's lives. I mean, in seventh grade, I had a mohawk. And I think kids at that age need to have as much support as they possibly can have and as much love. And so any kind of legislation that is just creating worse and more problematic and traumatic mental health issues is never good. Whether a kid identifies as transgender and whether or not that sticks with them through life, it doesn't really matter. What, what the child is saying at that age is that they need support and they need love and they don't feel like they're getting it. And so I don't agree with the legislation. I applaud Representative Wheatley for not supporting it. And that is my opinion on the matter.
Thank you. Representative Moser?
Yes, thank you. I would agree that transgender and gender dysphoric youth need a lot more support than they currently get. That's why I work so hard on mental health parity, mental health care. And, you know, in terms of the buzzwords that drive a lot of legislation, you'll never see me legislating by headline. I don't do that. I work a lot on very positive solutions that probably don't make a lot of headlines, but they do help people. On the transgender athlete bill, I thought sixth grade was a little young. But I do think that in fairness to the girls who are spending their entire life learning to be or practicing to be a collegiate level or a, an Olympic level swimmer, for example, I think that they are being unfairly, you know, it's not a target, but, you know, competed against by biological boys. And so I did support it just as an affirming fairness issue. But again, you know, I really believe that if a child is exhibiting symptoms of some sort of gender dysphoria or anxiety, depression, you know, adolescence is a terrible time already and it's difficult. I think that we need to provide support for those kids.
Thank you. And Kelly?
So this is something that comes before me as a mental health professional that works with children and teens a lot. What does every human being want? To be loved, to feel safe, to be accepted, to feel heard and to be seen. And I think you can do all of those things without violating any norms that a family may hold. You could be that safe person. And so for lots of kids that come, you know, I work in low income, with low-income populations and lots of those kids don't feel safe at home. And so my job is to make them know that they have at least one safe person that they can talk to. It may not be me, it may be a teacher, maybe a doctor. What we do know is that when we do not accept and affirm and hear folks that, that may be in the queer community or, you know, exploring the queer community in their own identity is that they shy away from services. So we are setting the baseline for whether these people will access mental health and healthcare for the rest of their lives. And we have to be very careful with that and be good stewards of that art industry. You know, I think that part of, when we think of diversity, equity, inclusion, and we think of all these initiatives, we really need to expand that to the LGBTQ plus community. I have a friend who is a nurse practitioner that is starting, she started her own LLC, BP the Queer NP, to work on elevating how can we better care and make those, make people in that community feel accepted and want to come and access services and seek care. Because they are all humans and they all deserve access to healthcare and mental healthcare. The sports issue, I'm at an eight-year-old soccer practice right now. I'd say most of these parents think their kids are going to go on to play.
Thank you, Kelly. I'm going to put you on mute.
Thank you. Back to you, Julie.
Great, thank you. The next question comes from a panel who was watching this. And they are wanting to know about your positions and your votes if you were in the legislature this year on the CAPA CS. And that is the collaborative agreement with which the, the advanced nurse practitioners have to have this collaborative agreement with a physician in order to be able to prescribe medications. So if you were in the legislature, which would be Representatives Wheatley and Moser, they would like to know how you voted and why. Oh, we're only going to do it for those who were in the legislature? Okay, thanks, because that's not how the question was. But okay, we'll start with Representative Wheatley.
Thank you for the question. And I did touch on it in my introduction that I did support House Bill 354. That was Representative Russell Weber's bill to ease restrictions of the CAPA CS. It's pretty simple for me. I do support the expanded, it's expanded care. The work, the CAPA CS that has been, has been set up or the, the structure of it has been too restrictive for nurses who want to practice, particularly in areas that we need more healthcare access in. And that's one of the, the major reasons that I've supported it and have spoken to many legislators from across the aisle who have said yes, that they, they support it too for that reason is that it does potentially provide the healthcare access in different parts of the state that currently do not have physicians who were there that, but CAPA, with the restrictions lessened in CAPA CS, they would be able to practice in those areas. And I will continue to support it. I will continue to support and work on the areas that there are some concerns about it. And there will always, always will be. There is this way in legislation. And I appreciate my colleague and her efforts in this area. And I like to hear her suggestions. And we will, we will get this passed again and we'll get it through the Senate very soon, I hope.
Representative Moser, it's your turn.
Sure. Thanks, Julie. Yeah, I had some issues with it just because it doesn't address really leveling, leveling the playing field for all practitioners of primary care, which is basically what, what this is asking for. It's asking that nurses have the collaborative agreement, the CAPA CS lifted to prescribe controlled substances. Nurses, advanced practice nurses can already practice independently after four-year collaborative agreement with a, a practicing physician. It's really about patient-centered care, team-based care. We know that we get better outcomes when we work with others, who, other professionals, who we can ask questions of. And, and medicine is not an easy field. And so it, it takes the support, we talked about burnout. It takes the support of a lot of other healthcare professionals to, to really look at an individual's needs. The issues that I had were, you know, as former drug policy director, do we really need more prescribing of controlled substances? That's really what this is about. That's why I couldn't support it. I would love to have the, the training be the same. I mean, physicians have a minimum of a three, usually a four-year residency and then a three-year fellowship, which not all nurses, nurses actually, I mean, I'm a nurse. You know, we don't, we don't have that training. And so, you know, if we could find a way to level the playing field some way, increase training, perhaps residency, pass the same bar, the same boards. It's just not the same level of training. And so, you know, while I really support patient-centered care, team-based care is really what we need for quality healthcare in Kentucky.
Thank you. And there is a second part of that question that would go to those of you who were not elected yet. And it, it, the question is, would, do you support removing that, the CAPA CS on the advanced nurse practitioners and why? So let's start with Kelly.
I would support expanding, expanding the rights of those nurses to prescribe. You know, I think we're in an era where we don't recognize the expertise and degrees of many professionals. And again, we are at a, we are at a shortage right now. And so we have got to address that in some way and clear up this bottleneck that's happening in our healthcare and mental healthcare systems. So I, I do think that we need to trust, trust our nurses and their training. And, and we need to expand their rights to prescribe and, and let them actually serve lots of those communities. You know, we're seeing this right now, especially in mental health. And that we have got, we, we just don't have enough people for everyone to be seen. So if a person has to wait weeks and weeks and weeks for an appointment. I mean, I have a child with a disability. I'm a person who reached out-of-pocket max spending my health insurance every single year. I'm a person who's on waiting list for my child to receive care. And so I think receiving care is the ultimate goal that all of us have for improved healthcare outcomes. And again, my experience with nurses are that they are the experts. They are the ones that see everything. They are the ones that catch things many times because they're the ones sitting with patients the most and spending the most time with patients. So I trust them that they would be able to perform these duties that they have specialized in and that they are trained to do.
I'm sorry, Kelly. Thank you so much for your comments. Julie, you want to continue with your, you're on mute?
All right. Didn't know I hit the mute button. So Rainie, you're next.
So I have a, I mean, my opinion, I think, is that it needs to be a balancing act. We definitely need to solve the problem of the limited amount of healthcare practitioners, especially in the more rural parts of state that are really suffering, especially after some of the, the weather issues, related issues that we've had both in Western and Eastern Kentucky. At the same time, given the history of what we've seen in the heroin epidemic recently as a result of over-prescribing of pain medications like OxyContin and those sorts of things, I think that it's really important that we are careful to not over-expand that in a way that we have a lot of people who are willy-nilly able to, to prescribe medication. That being said, I do think that there's a happy medium. We don't really need to go to either extreme. I think we could have special abilities or allow, allowances to allow people for those underserved areas to maybe have prescription abilities for, for medications with some oversight from maybe an MD or somebody else with a little bit better training of that. I, I am concerned though that we do it thoughtfully so that the people that are given privileges to prescribe are people that are well-trained. And I think a lot of our nurse practitioners, as Representative Moser said, are trained to do that and are licensed to be able to do that right now. So I, I think that there's a pretty happy medium solution instead of having to go to an extreme on one way or the other.
All right. Thank you. And Debbie, you'll be next.
All right. I can put it very simply. I would vote to expand it because I think that it's time that we start trusting people. The nurse practitioners are trained. And I agree that we need to make sure that they, they have good, solid training. But the thing is that we are underserved and they're overworked. And we have got to do something. Either we're not going to have medical coverage for everybody or we're just, we're going to have to kind of change our paradigm a bit. And so I would be for it and I would definitely be to expand it and trust that they would do it.
We appreciate your answer. Now I'll give it back to Dr. Stone.
Actually, our time is almost up. And so Dr. Stone does not get another question. I am so.
Yeah, I got the hook this time.
I'm sorry, Dr. Stone. Our time is up. And in just a few minutes, I'm going to let our president end us out. But I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for coming so that 89,000 nurses who are voters will have an opportunity to hear your answers to some of these questions. I also want to invite all of you, as with other legislators, that before you start developing your legislative agenda or your legislation as you're beginning to write it, if it has to do with health and healthcare and nurses, please feel at liberty to contact the Kentucky Nurses Association. We have a plethora of experts at our fingertips and we want to help. Please let us help as you are beginning to develop your legislation that may impact nurses, nursing and healthcare. And Donna, would you close us out?
I will. I'd be happy to. Thanks, everyone, for being on. Thank you so much for the legislators and candidates for taking your time to spend with us tonight to hear our needs and our concerns and share with us about your interests and where you might be able to advocate for us. Thank you so much for all the participants. And please share widely with your friends and colleagues and family members. And thank you to Teresa Huber and all the other folks from the Northern chapters of KNA for hosting this event. And hopefully, we will all have a great legislative session and the issues of nursing will be promoted and successful, will be successful in those areas. So thank you all very much again for being here tonight and we'll let you go. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.